It will also be recorded and shared out to local cable TV stations and the Legal Women Voters website. If you want to submit any questions, you can do so by sending them to GCD3questions@gmail.com. Again, that's G-C-D-three-questions@gmail.com. The next announcement is the state primary election will be held Tuesday, September 6th. Every vote counts, so get out and vote. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. The deadline to register to vote in the state primary election is Saturday, August 27th, 5:00 p.m. Early voting will take place in the town offices, in the gym in the back of the building of the town offices on August 27th to September 2nd. The hours are 10 to 2 on Saturday and Sunday, 8:30 to 4 Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and on Friday, 8:30 to 1.
On Tuesday, it's till 7:00.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tuesday, 8:30 to 7:00 p.m. Precincts 1 and 2 will vote at the Senior Center at 75 Ground Road. Precincts 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 will vote at McCarthy Middle School at 250 North Road. And precincts 9, 10, and 11 will vote here at the town office gym, 50 Billerica Road.
Just to clarify, the precinct locations are for Election Day, right? And all early voting is at the gym?
Yes.
So there's no 3A and 5A then on that particular thing, right?
That's correct. Next announcement, let's save the date for Chelmsford's first annual Sober Fest. Chelmsford's Health Department Candlelight Vigil will follow at dusk. It'll be held on September 10th from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m. Let's break the stigma for mental illness and addiction. If you have any questions, you can contact Brittany Ginsburg. Her email address is B Ginsburg at the pinkcloudconnect.org. The Health Department is also asking us to join Chelmsford's Candlelight Vigil for Substance Use Disorder Awareness. It'll be held at Chelmsford Center Town Commons Saturday, September 10th, and that'll be 6:30 start time, shining names on lost loved ones. And then the event will begin at 7:00 p.m. The Military Community Covenant Task Force invites all to the community, all in the community to celebrate or to remember the 9/11 events, and they'll be hosting that ceremony on September 10th at 9:00 a.m. here at the town offices out front, between the town offices and the fire station in front of the 9/11 memorial. Next up, please join the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee in celebrating Chelmsford Together International Day of Peace on Saturday, September 17th from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the Town Common. Money will go to UNICEF Protect the Children Fund, Ukraine Fund, so please join us on that day. On Saturday, September 17th, the Lowell Regional Transit Authority is giving a free Day of Riding, Try Transit Day. All buses and Roadrunner vehicles on Saturday, on that Saturday, will be free. And this is the LRTA's way to try to introduce public transportation to the community, so please get out and give it a try. It will result in less traffic, reduce energy consumption, economic development, and a clean environment. Next up, we have the Chelmsford Health Department Fall Festival, October 1st, 12 to 4:00 p.m. This will be on the Chelmsford Center Town Commons. If it rains that day, it'll be held across the street at the Center for the Arts. They're gonna have a lot of events. They'll have activities with different vendors. They'll have a petting zoo, Touch a Truck event, and Princess and Superhero Meet and Greet will be also available. There'll be music, food, drinks, ice cream. They're asking that you bring a donation for the food pantry, and if you do that, you'll be entered in a raffle, which kind of falls into the next public notice. So if you donate three items to the food pantry table at the Fall Festival, you'll be entered into a raffle. Items that are needed, various foods, children snacks, juice box, cooking oil, sprays, personal products like shampoo, conditioner, soaps, toothpaste, toothbrushes, body wash, toilet tissue, body lotion, shaving cream. So please come out and participate, and remember to bring your three items to get entered in the raffle.
Thank you, Ken. And next up, we have public input. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public input? We just need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm kind of new at this. Brian Latina, precinct 9, town meeting rep, 15 Jesse Road. I wanted to come and speak with you on several topics, and I'll try to make it as brief as I can. I watched your last Select Board meeting with a little concern, and there were lots of topics that I wanted to hit on, if I may, regarding the comment about sewers and the fact that, fact of the matter is, a few years ago, we put in a $2 million sewer station upgrade on the Mill Road Pumping Station. It was 24 years old, and at town meeting, I commented and asked questions about, gosh, do we have to replace the entire sewer system every 24 years? Good grief. And at the time, the presenter said that, no, in this case, that pumping station was simply at capacity. In order to have, to upgrade it for the $2 million, we needed, it would double our capacity there. We weren't told at the time that we had this plan to do an overlay district, and there were all kinds of things going on in my neighborhood that now come to light that it was really for that other problem. At, recently, we built a new chemical plant on Mill Road at Turnpike, and they put an eight-inch water main there. All of our lawns are brown. We don't have enough water, yet there was an eight-inch main put in right before the sewer moratorium, and I'm looking at it saying, gosh. I watched your meeting, was very concerned at one of the residents commenting that one of our fire hydrants, or two or three of them, failed when there was a fire in her shed. And I'm wondering, I know that the Water Department is a separate entity of the state, but we have four, I think, three or four of them in our town, and I'm real concerned that fire hydrant that I clear the snow out of in front of my neighbor's house every snowfall may not work. When are we gonna check these hydrants out? I've never seen that one flushed. Typically, they do flush them when the water main in our area breaks, which has typically been every house on Nancy Road, every house on Jesse, except mine so far, has had a leak, and that, I guess, was the testing of those hydrants. But I'd like the board to please ask the Water Department, the Center District, when my fire hydrant's gonna be, you know, checked out, if you wouldn't mind. It should be done every year or two. Sewer Department, we paid and bought a new sewer department in our town several years ago, and I was, I'm gonna use the word horrified, I'm gonna call it a failure, that we don't have an inspection and maintenance plan, having hired and built that into our DPW building, a sewer department. I appreciate you putting that on the list of things we need to do, but I'm struck and a little horrified that we don't have an inspection and maintenance plan. Are we just running out and fixing problems in the different departments? And I'd ask you to check out and make sure that the new Surface Water Department has an inspection and service planned, so that when roads flood, when there's different issues around town, they go and tag them, and they build it into their plan, and they update it. This is normal, this is normal business, and I'd like each department to have that as their standard operating procedure, and I was surprised that the Sewer Department doesn't have that. They've been around for quite a while. We paid $160 million for the sewer, the whole town, and now we're just getting around to having inspection and trying to find out where the infiltration is. Yes?
I know you have a lot of topics, can you, in a couple minutes?
I'll jump.
Okay, thank you.
Traffic study. I was horrified that we didn't check the sidewalks out next to the roadways as we did the traffic study and found we had $39 million in the hole as far as getting our roads to a standard that we would expect. Drove through the center yesterday. My car jumped all over the road. I watched Matthew in the back in his wheelchair bouncing left and right as I was approaching the stoplight at the, I'll call it Chicken Corner, on the far side from Westford. I usually don't go that way. The asphalt trucks are very heavy. They've torn up that road or sunken in that road. I looked at that and said, why don't we have all that information about the road and sidewalk since we did a whole town review? The DOT just built a ramp at Turnpike in Billerica Road, just down the road here, where the traffic typically goes through the light, every light changed through the red light. I've complained about that quite a lot, but I hear that we do have some sort of a light upgrade going on in there. But the DOT put a handicap ramp on the far side and a sidewalk, crosswalk that's never been there before with the, with the light systems there, and at the end of the ramp, if you're blind, you go up the little ramp, have the little buttons on it, they put the light post right at the end of the ramp. I don't know who's doing this kind of work. I measured it. It's exactly 39 inches, which is ADA, one meter wide, to clear it, but please don't let these guys put a post in the middle of a ramp that's used for blind people or handicapped against a wall. It needs to be moved. Turnpike has the same problem. They built a piece of a sidewalk, and they, they put the light poles in the middle of the sidewalk if you ever extend it either direction.
How many more topics do you have?
A couple more.
Okay.
Warren Avenue. All the handicap street entrances and exits on the sidewalk have been torn out for about a month now. I talked to the Disability Commission about that. There's nothing more dangerous than a six-foot by six-foot cutout in the pavement with nothing more than a sawhorse in front of it for the entire month of August when you'd normally be transiting that. Can't be used. Drove around the back, the blue dumpster thing that they put in the back looks horrible. Could we please paint that Chelmsford maroon? That is a complete eyesore. I get it for exercising, there was a guy out there exercising, but I've gotten a lot of people calling asking, what in the world did town meeting do? I voted no. Finally, I don't know how you folks deal with newspaper articles that are a mess. Two weeks ago, the Lowell Sun in the Sunday paper misquoted and misunderstood everything that was said at the planning board meeting that I was at. I was talking about a warehouse that the planning board has to do a special permit for. Town meeting created something called CEIOD to take the 65 acres and try to get some nice businesses in there. We have a building that's up for being, I guess, torn down, that gets $141 a square foot, two floors. That's arguably $280 a square foot, and they want to turn it into a $55 a square foot, one-level warehouse. We need to have the planning board look at it from an economic point of view as a special permit requires. Special permits require economic review, not by the planning board, but by the developer that's coming to you. So I told, told the board in three meetings over time, which the reporter didn't pick up on the other two meetings, that we need to have the special permit being special. They need to have a complete application, and that was my complaint in there, and that's, that was misquoted. One, one more, I...
One more, one minute, okay?
I think I caught that. One more, one minute. I think I'm set, actually.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Latina. Would anyone else like to speak during public input?
I have a comment outline, I'm not sure if that is a...
Yes, so if you could, if you could please turn your video on, and we just, we need your name and address for the record, please.
Yep, it's Kyle Jenta, 228 Dunstable Road, North Chelmsford.
I'm sorry, Kyle who?
Kyle Jenta.
Thank you.
Just comments, I think we'll be touching on later in this meeting around trucks coming out of Ledge Road and down Dunstable, onto Swain, and back to the highway from the, to the concrete plant in Westford. Being on that side of the road, on Dunstable Road, we've got a lot of trucks that go by every day, from about, usually starting at about 6:30 in the morning till 5, 6 at night. It's constant. There, every five, 10 minutes, there's another truck loaded with, with rocks that spill over the sides, they cover the road, they tear up the road. It's very loud, Jake breaks, all of that. The road in front of our house specifically has been torn up a lot. There's a dip in the road that caused a lot of water to cool and then flow into our driveway. There's a lot of old houses around, you know, ours especially with fieldstone basements that can't handle that type of water and rush from the road. I'm pretty psyched, so I believe we're touching on that later in the meeting today, but a big part of our life is dealing with those trucks right now, so, and a lot of our neighbors as well.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during public input? Okay, seeing none in the Zoom room or this room, we'll move on to committee vacancies.
Committee vacancies, as of August 22nd. Arts and Technology Education Fund is one on expired three-year term. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee is looking to fill one three-year term. Capital Planning Committee, one one-year term. CCA Advisory Committee, one one-year term. Commissions on Disabilities is looking to fill one three-year term. Community Action Program Committee has four seats available. Those are one-year terms. Community Preservation Fund Committee has one three-year term. Council on Aging, two three-year terms. Cultural Council has two on expired three-year terms and one three-year term. Holiday Decorating Committee, two one-year terms. Parade Committee, all applicants are welcome. Those are one-year terms, ending each July 31st. Permit Building Committee has one three-year term. Public Advisory, Public Records Advisory Committee is looking to fill one seat. That's a one-year term. Recycling Committee is a one, one-year term. If you are interested in serving on a town border committee, please complete an online application available at the town website, or you can reach out to the Town Manager's Office here at 50 Billerica Road, or email TMoffice@chelmsfordma.gov. Again, that's TMoffice@chelmsfordma.gov, or call 978-250-5202. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, we have a draft of a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in September. This was a request that came to the board through the Woburn Middle Sex Lions Club, who is sponsoring the annual request through a larger organization, and as part of that, they will also be collaborating with the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lowell to make cards for hospitalized children. Do we have anyone here from the Middle Sex Lions Club? Okay. Does the board have any comments or questions?
I think it reads pretty good. Pretty well.
It's fine.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll finalize that for our next meeting on September 12th and sign it off, and if anyone from the Lions Club would like to come either in person or virtually, you're welcome to do that. Okay, next up, we have licenses. The first one is a one-day beer and wine license for Access Communications. Do we have anyone here from Access Communications?
I'm online.
Could we just get your name, please?
Jackie Bowser.
Thank you, Jackie. Do you want to just give a brief overview of what you'd like to do here?
Sure. So we are hosting a corporate event at our office in Chelmsford. It's on 300 Apollo Drive. The purpose of the event is really to showcase our latest and greatest technologies. We manufacture and sell security cameras and solutions. This event is open to our end customers, our partners, distributors, technology partners, and we are just looking to host an Oktoberfest-themed event, so there would be a food truck as well as a beer truck available for attendees.
Any questions or comments from the board? No? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a one-day beer and wine license to Access Communications for their event to be held on September 22nd at 300 Apollo Drive.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. You're all set, Jackie. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have a common vigil or license transfer from Brick House Pizza at 67 Middle Sex Street. Hello?
Hi there.
If you could just give us your names for the record.
My name's Brett Fay. This is my partner, Joseph Bu. How are you?
Good.
We're interested in transferring the license from the existing owner of Brick House Pizza in North Chelmsford to, we're planning to buy the building and the business.
Any questions or comments from the board?
You have that under contract? I mean, you have an agreement?
Yes. Yep, yes. We have a purchase and sale, and we're going, we're finalizing the loan process at the moment.
So you're gonna keep the same name?
Yes.
And the current owner's okay with that?
He is. Yeah, that's, that was kind of a big part of the deal for us. We weren't interested in starting from scratch. So he's been there for 26 years, so we're, we're planning to try to parlay his success and continue on with it.
Sure, okay.
But he's keeping the other two brick houses?
Correct.
Is it, is it like a franchise agreement, or is it a...
No, it's just, it's just a straight purchase and sale agreement. They're not really competitors, to be honest, because of the location, the geographic, and North just kind of handles a different, different area, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the application to transfer the common vigil or license from Michael Brown DBA Brick House Pizza to ZMD LLC, doing business as Brothers Pizza, to be exercised on the premises at 67 Middle Sex Street.
Second.
Should be Brick House Pizza doing business as Brick House Pizza.
Oh, it says Brothers Pizza in the letter. Do you want to amend them?
Well, hold on, let's just make sure there's the application. Oh, it says Brick House on the application.
It does.
All right, so I will make a new motion to approve the application to transfer the common vigil or license from Michael Brown DBA Brick House Pizza to ZMD LLC, doing business as Brick House Pizza, to be exercised on the premises at 67 Middle Sex Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? We have the motion, right?
Excellent.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All next up, we have reports and presentations.
Yeah, the first one, we got Carl Bischoff here from the Conservation Commission, who's going to give an update regarding the Warren Pole reservation. He's got a PowerPoint, so, thanks, Carl, for taking time this evening.
Good evening. Carl Bischoff with the Conservation Commission here in Chelmsford. So go to the next slide, please. Just gonna give you an update on the status of the, getting the site open to the public and the conservation restriction. So the conservation restriction, right now, we have an agreement with the land trust, the Chelmsford Land Trust, who will hold the restriction. We are in agreement on terms and wording, and we're in the process of having it reviewed by our town council. We gave it to them last week, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have feedback from them. Town council has reviewed this already in the past, and this is kind of like, we think, the final review. When that's completed, we will, we still have some open exhibits. We have to get a baseline documentation report completed. I'm not sure of the timing on getting that done, and I'm not clear if we need that as part of the conservation restriction application. I know by the time it gets completed, we're gonna have to have that done, but I believe we can submit without the BDR to the state. We also need to get a final agreement with the Water District on the municipal well that we want to have this as a possible future, maybe 50 years from now, future municipal well, so we need to get that also finalized. So the next steps are also to finalize the easement discussions, close with town council, complete the exhibit deliveries, and submit it to the state. Any questions on the CR? Okay, next. So the site improvements, we had a plan submitted to the Conservation Commission from the DPW back in December. We approved it. Work really began in earnest in July, actually in April, I think, there was a Vernal Pool investigation, which was so far a negative finding. It's not a Vernal Pool adjacent to the site. A number of other activities have happened, and right now, the driveway is nearly complete. It's in really good shape. The DPW's done a fantastic job getting that widened and opened up. It's completely different view from what it looked like three months ago, two months ago. It's, it looks much, much better. The access, the parking is the next thing in, to be done, to get the, the parking done, and in fact, we're gonna meet tomorrow on-site to kind of go over the final layout for the parking area. Next page just shows kind of some pictures of the, we had some erosion controls put into place. They moved some boulders. You can see the driveway is much wider. In the past, it was, you, we used to joke, it was the Bat Cave, if you remember, when we were, some of us were much younger. You couldn't even see down the driveway, but right now, it's, it's much more open. Next page, we have, parking area has been cleaned up a lot, and we're close to getting that relayed out, getting it, getting it set into place probably in the next few weeks. And next page, we have a kiosk ready to go in place, and we will have an order in place for a granite sign for the site. Next page, trail improvements. We've been keeping the trails up. There were trails on-site all along, and we've been keeping them up so that when we're, but we didn't want them to get overgrown, so we're keeping them in good shape. I've been able to walk them a number of times, and it's a, it's a fantastic site. The public is gonna really enjoy the site. Next page. So one of the things that's come up is that there have been beavers on the site. The beavers have built dams in the last year, year and a half. That has really changed the habitat. We believe that that's good for the site. It's good for the way the property is going to be in the future as a meadow and as a diverse habitat. Unfortunately, I think with the drought, the beavers might have bailed out. The beaver dam is wet there, but when I saw it last week, it's almost completely dry, so we'll see what happens. But we, we think that if anything, that's a good place for beavers to be in town. It doesn't affect neighbors at all. It's, it's where you want beavers to be, so we'll see what happens, but I just wanted you to know that that's been, there have been some discussions, people concerned about that, but we think that's a good place for the beavers to be. And then the last page, I think, is looking at trying to get this complete, completing the driveway and parking area, getting signage out on Boston Road for, to direct people driving in where, where the site is, and we've had discussions with, with Christine and the DPW about what to do there. I don't think we have a final plan, but we need to get that nailed down. And then, of course, the site signage for parking and the granite sign, the installations of gates and the kiosk, and the announcement. We should have some kind of an announcement on the town website when it's open to the public, and hopefully that's in the fall, if not even maybe September, as we're getting to the end of August already. Questions, comments, concerns?
Watch the ticks.
Oh, boy. Actually, I've had very little ticks in the last two months there, and I've been there a lot. I think it's so dry, I think.
Well, you know my experience with the ticks.
Yes. I had a similar one earlier this year.
Yeah.
So when do you expect the conservation restriction to be hopefully done? Does that have to be closed before you can open it to the public?
No, there's no dependency on opening to the public on, based on having that done. My understanding is there's no requirement for us to have that done, other than it's, it's what we committed to in the town warrant, in the article, and we want to get that completed. My understanding, not having done this, but everything I've read and heard people say is that submitting it to the state can be multiple turns, and it can take quite a while. When we first got into this, people that had done this before said it can be a couple of years' process to get this done, and we're in, we're just finishing year, year one.
Yeah, it takes a little while, based on our past experience with other properties.
Yeah, but we're in agreement with the land trust, and we have some details to clean up, and we think once we get those cleaned up, we should be able to submit to the DCS, and I expect they'll have some issues. We'll deal with that, and then we'll turn it around.
Carl, before you depart, could you also talk about the town meeting warrant article regarding the jurisdiction?
So we've actually had a second discussion about that. I believe we're gonna discuss it tomorrow, I know we're gonna discuss it at our meeting tomorrow night, so without making any further comment... making any further comment, that may not end up on the, on the article, if that, does that work?
Sure, that's fine, just let me know.
So we won't be discussing that tonight, because you're gonna take another pass at it at your meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
And next is the traffic, the monthly traffic safety committee report, and we have a bevy of members here, we have Chief Spinney and Christine Clancy and Tony Rapucci, and they all participate in this this evening.
Good evening, Christine Clancy, DPW Director. So we're gonna hold on the first update for current actions, because that's what we'll be here talking a little bit more about. I just want to start with the pending actions. So the first item is the bottleneck reduction competitive grant for Richardson Road and Princeton Street intersection. This was submitted in, on June thirtieth, we have not heard back from the state as of yet. It is still pending, we actually had a meeting with Mass DOT today and did ask for an update on that, and so they said they will try to give us an update, but there has, has not been any awards or any decisions made for that round.
Christine, if we get that grant, what would it provide?
Well, it would have to be scoped out by Mass DOT, but our request was to make that intersection signalized.
Signalized, okay.
The next item under pending action is the installation of the permanent speed bump on Ledge Road, so this is the fourth speed bump, there's three right now, rubber speed bumps, this one would be laid in asphalt. DPW has laid out this asphalt, we'll be placing a sign, because this will be in place throughout the winter. We, we do expect that this will be installed within the next week or two, so I've told the contractor, really, I mean, I like it before school, but definitely by the end of next Friday, so before Labor Day.
Christine, we had a, at least one inquiry, which I know was shared with you, about why can't, why don't we know enough to do all of the speed bumps, so could you just address kind of?
Sure.
That whole scenario and what the plan is here for the public?
Sure, so there are currently three speed bumps, and we do pull them up ahead of the winter. This is one that would be asphalt, we have looked at, there's, there's no exact detail to show what a speed bump should be, there's guidelines, so the speed bump, I think we're looking at three and a half inches tall, about eight feet wide, we want to make sure that this is, this will hold up over the winter, and it will be something that our plows can get over. So this is really a good pilot to see if this one works, and if this one works, we will install the other three in this scenario, if it seems like it's, it needs to be adjusted by a couple feet, we can make that adjustment in the, in the spring to the other ones and to this one as well. I just, I don't want to move forward with three more speed bumps until we vet out that this can get through the winter.
Thank you.
And then, we also, as a follow-up to the listening session, one of the items was to look at making, putting in a crosswalk across from the CCA, across North Road. We are looking into this, but really to see if there's any ability to, to make the intersection of North Road and Littleton Road, a, having an exclusive crossing phase, if that's possible, that will likely have an impact to the traffic at the, the traffic in the entire intersection, and that, we just want to understand if there is a level of service impact. So we, we are coordinating with a consultant right now?
Excuse me, in the audience, your voices are really carrying up here, if you could take it in the hallway, that would be great, thank you, go ahead.
So we are coordinating with a third party, a consultant, just to look at the level of service impact at the intersection, and also, we will address just the possibility of putting a crosswalk right at the CCA, which I know we've looked at before, it is very close to the intersection, so we will address that as we, when we do this overall analysis, but the focus will be to look at that intersection too, just to see the, what would be the impact if we were to do an exclusive cross, crossing phase. We had received word back from Mass DOT about the application for, through our shared space, a shared space grant for an installation of a sidewalk, or sorry, a crosswalk at Mill Road and Raymond Road, and they, that was not accepted, we presented this last month, and the Mass DOT did voice some concerns with the, the proposal and site distance concerns. So we are right now, as a traffic committee, as DPW, going back to see what other options exist, and really, any option would have to address the site distances at this intersection, at this location. There's a horizontal site distance on the east side, and a vertical site distance on the west side, so it's something that we are looking into, it probably wouldn't just be a crosswalk, it would have to be something that would be a larger footprint, potentially some, some, like, traffic islands or barriers as, at the approaches, but it's something we work, we're looking at and will continue in providing updates on this item. Under completing, completed actions, good news, I think we had previously mentioned that we were going to be awarded the local bottleneck reduction program grant from last year, at the intersection of Golden Cove and Bilirica Road, that we officially have been awarded the project, we just actually signed the agreement with Mass DOT, and it involves the installation of two detection cameras at the intersection, so those cameras should provide improved movement through the intersection. It's anticipated this work will be done potentially this winter, but in the spring, definitely, the deadline is by next June, but it depends on, I guess, when we can get the equipment. This will be completely completed by Mass DOT, we're just responsible for the police details, which should be relatively minor, so that's, that's great news for that project. Are there any questions before we go to, I guess, the Swain Road? Alright, so, we do want to talk here, and I have with me town engineer Tony Rapucci and Chief Spinney, the police chief, so we have looked at, I think this has been a topic that has been discussed at many previous traffic committee meetings, also select board meetings, in looking at the traffic situation on Ledge Road and Swain Road, and we wanted to look at the traffic, potentially, the, especially the trucks, and I guess the question was, could we have an alternate truck route right now, and I have, there's also those handouts in your packet, and there's also a board here that we will be speaking to. Right now, coming out of the plant, out of Ledge Road, a lot of the trucks turn down Swain Road and then head on Gorton Road to the highway, and we wanted to see what other, I mean, there's, there's other potential routes, but the one that we really looked at was if traffic was to turn right onto Dunstable, go down Dunstable, go through Vinyl Square to Princeton Street, North Road, and then to Drum Hill. From there, they would, the trucks would be on Route Three, they could go south or north to their destinations. We also had looked at potentially, here's a picture of a fire truck, and we'll show these videos in a minute, could the potentially be a hard right onto Gorton Road, and that is, just given the amount of movements coming out of Dunstable, onto Gorton, that really is not a viable option whatsoever. So tonight, the route that we do want to talk about in more detail is, so if we were to put a truck exclusion on Swain Road and turning onto Gorton Road, the alternate route would be coming down Dunstable, through Vinyl Square, taking a, a left out of, through Vinyl Square and heading south to Drum Hill. This detour route would be about two miles to Drum Hill, it could potentially be a four-mile detour if the destination was to go north, because it'd have to go two miles south to go two miles north up Route Three. I will soon turn it over to Tony Rapucci to talk about the turning movements, so I have here a couple of videos that we took, I believe it was last week, the week before, and then we also did some computer simulations.
Did you want me to do the video?
Sure, sorry, so if you want to play the first one, this here is a fire truck, and then we have a dump truck, a DPW dump truck taking the turn, taking a left from Dunstable.
I can, I think you were talking when the fire truck, I'll show it one more time for folks. Did you want me to go to the next slide?
Sure, is, is the one more, is this the entire video?
I don't know.
Or this is, this is the dump truck, so there also was a dump truck that made its way out, edged into traffic, and made its way out. So, I, the next part of the presentation is our town engineer, Tony Rapucci, so we ran, I mean, this was a flyover, a recording of actual dump trucks, fire trucks, going through the intersection, but we also ran this in our, I guess, Carlson or AutoCAD to show this, to show how trucks travel through this intersection. So I will turn at this point over to Tony Rapucci, our town engineer, thank you.
Hi, Tony.
How's it going? Tony Rapucci, the town engineer, could you just go to the next slide? So this is the fire apparatus, this is, the dimensions were given me from Chief Ryan, it accounts for the wheelbase, as well as the overhang in the front and the overhang in the back. This varies slightly from the video, as the operator in the truck, as for safety reasons, you see that they cut it a little bit sharper, trying to, they ended up taking more of the double yellow line. In doing the method that I use, they'd either have to go over the double yellow on Dunstable, if there's any traffic coming towards them would be an impact, so the operator that was doing the drive made sure not to do that, so they ended up being closer and running more of a, instead of a sweeping turn, more of a direct tangent line to that. You can go to the next slide. So this is showing a sixty-five-foot semi-truck, it's a fifty-three-foot trailer attached to a truck. In the, the image here, you can see that there are blue cyan colored lines, that's the overhang from the back of the truck, while you can see the purple/pink lines are the wheelbases. We went out in GPS both the yellow double line, as well as the, the white fog lines, and the, the concrete island, there were no trucks in the Carlson software that we did it to until we overlaid it onto Google, you see that parked truck would get hit if any semi-trucks of that size were to go through that intersection, or if there was a truck parked there, they would end up going over that concrete island, kind of taking over the entire intersection, and could you go to the next slide? This is representative of a thirty-foot truck, it's a closest approximation to what we have for a dump truck, similar to what you had in highway, is it similar to the video? You can see with a tight, in, tight turn up off of Dunstable, they can try to sneak into Gorton Road, still crossing over that double yellow, and the second video showing the commercial truck that was doing the same, same driving pattern, shows that there's real no way of getting through the intersection without crossing over the double yellow lines the way that it's currently instituted. Go to the next slide, we, unless there's any questions on those images? I'll be passing over to Chief Spinney.
Thank you, good evening. So when we did this, we took an extensive look, obviously, at the Swain Road issue. We feel for the residents there, we know they're unhappy, they're frustrated, we all are, but we wanted to take a strong look at this possible alternate route, and, and, you know, get the best look at how it might impact Vinyl Square, so a couple of things jump out at me with this, with this possibility. One is the size of the tandem trucks, especially entering Vinyl Square, how we ran the example, the truck is gonna take up both lanes of travel, between the end of Dunstable Road to the beginning of Vinyl Square from Gorton Road. Those tandem trucks will literally take up both lanes of travel before they even get to the stop line to enter Vinyl Square. I think it's important to note that during that video, we had held traffic for those trucks, to let them exit, otherwise, we probably would have been there for much, much longer. So envision all volume that's going up Swain Road, coming into Vinyl Square, tandem truck units trying to exit Dunstable Road and enter Vinyl Square, especially where vehicles probably would be hesitant to let them out, I think it, it could be extremely dangerous and problematic. My other concern with, with considering this alternate route is the potential for diversion from the route, and when I say diversion, what I mean is, the trucks not following the route. There's a lot of roads in between Vinyl Square and Drum Hill Square. I think it's fair to say some unintended consequences of this route would impact Marin Alav, it would impact Diamond Street, it would impact Coolidge Street, it would impact Richardson Road at the very intersection that we've been looking at, it's already a dangerous intersection, Richardson and Princeton, to put that kind of truck volume on that street, at that intersection, I think would be dangerous. I think in addition to Richardson Road, you would impact Graniteville Road, you would impact Old Westford Road, and probably many more, not to mention that Richardson Road is a school zone, Graniteville Road has a school zone. I think, again, an unintended consequence of this, while, while potentially solving the issue for Swain Road, you would introduce a dozen other possible problems, and I don't want to see, I don't want to try to address an issue and cost twelve more. So that was our reasoning for, for trying to do the, the projection of the trucks entering the square, and the reason for that map there is to show the, the possible implications of trucks not staying on the alternate route. We have reached out to DOT, they would not give us an off-the-record decision on whether or not that alternative route would even be accepted, so that's, we're in a holding pattern on that, even if the town decided to, to actually move forward with this, we don't know if the state would approve. So, that's what we got on it.
Any questions, comments?
Jimmy, originally, I know, you, Paul, you and, we were gonna try to make a left-hand turn coming out of Ledge Road and go up and pick up Route Three up there?
That was under consideration, but I believe the town of Tingsboro would have to approve that.
Why?
Because the majority of the impact would be in their town.
The issue is that we would have to take a land easement in order to be able to make that left turn, and the residents spoke out against that.
That was part of it, but we could maybe take a little bit, but, I mean, we get, we can't stop, we don't stop the deep, you know, the junk, you know, the trash trucks and all the cut-through trucks and everything else from their town, I mean, so I, I'm, I'm just asking you, Jimmy, because it's your business, right? I mean, you said they'd have to give permission, you sure they'd have? I mean?
If, if we made an alter-
I know it was a matter of courtesy, and they didn't want us-
The reason we didn't move forward is what select board member Timmons just said, but if we tried to make an alternate route incorporated using another community, they have to sign off on it.
I think you're confusing two different, so the one discussion was just widening the road to let trucks take a left, and one was requiring them to take a left.
Right.
To require a left-hand turn. I want to make it available, I mean-
Right, but if we require a left-hand turn there, then we have to get Tingsboro's sign off. If we just widen the road and make it available, that involved land taking.
I just remember there was pushback on that as well.
And so, so Paul, the other thing that's ongoing right now is, is NIMCOG looking, help, you want to make a comment about that?
Yeah, we've got NIMCOG reaching, you know, researching and, and efforting this in terms of trying to see if, what other solutions could be possible, whether it's direct off-ramps, on-ramps, access to Route Three, to something-
Other roads.
Other roads that we, you know, so, and, and that, so we just don't have that report yet, or worked on yet.
I appreciate the thoroughness with which you looked at this, doing all the test truck runs and everything. Chief, the other question that had come up since our last meeting from one of the residents, and I think it was forwarded to you guys, was the, about whether or not we could put no engine brake signs up, because other communities have done that, and could you address that, please?
Right, so we looked into that, so I reached out to both the Westford Police Chief and the Tingsboro Police Chief, because those signs mentioned in the email are in those communities. Neither of those towns have bylaws with regards to engine braking, the signs were put up about twenty-five years ago to satisfy the concern of some residents, and they, to be blunt, they're unenforceable. We've also reached out to state DOT, and they have a policy that they are completely against any municipality enacting any bylaw, regulation, restricting or prohibiting jack brake, or an engine brake, because of the safety implications. Those devices are intentionally put into those vehicles to allow them to come to a safe stop. Now, one thing we can do, and I've already initiated this last week, we're gonna reach out to the businesses on the, in the quarries on Ledge Road, we're gonna have a conversation with management, we're gonna suggest some internal signage, reminding operators to use do-care with those engine brakes, and as I stand here right now, our message board is actually on Ledge Road urging drivers- to, um, you know, use some common sense with their engine braking systems. That sign is actually out there right now flashing that message. So we're hoping we can make some headway with management. The other thing we can do is, we can issue citations on ninety-sixteen, but in order for an officer to do that, it really has to be a malicious use of the jake brake, and that's very difficult to prove.
Chief, what's a ninety-sixteen?
Ninety-sixteen is Chapter Ninety, Section Sixteen of Mass General Laws. It, it refers to excessive unreasonable noise.
The noise, okay.
So, we have that authority to do that without a bylaw, but again, the officer would need to really show, um, probable cause that the operator of the truck was being malicious in the usage of the jake brake.
Assuming that the businesses are receptive to doing some type of internal signage or reminder to their, um, that the trucks using their facilities about responsible jake brake usage, would it be worth us looking at putting up some mirrored signs on Ledge and Dunstable, which I think is where the primary complaints have come from, as a reminder, not necessarily as a preclusion that can't be enforced?
Yes, I think that you'll see around town, there's yellow reminder speed signs that are non-enforceable, like you might come up to a curve and it'd be a suggested speed limit. We could do something like that, maybe a, a, a well-phrased sign with regards to reduced usage, but, uh, you know, Mass DOT does not recommend any type of prohibition signage. So...
Any other questions? I had one more then. Um, I, and I don't know who this is for, Paul, but I've observed, like, in this meeting, we had two residents provide public input on different traffic or sidewalk infrastructure concerns, and when I watch the planning board meetings, um, as they have their public hearings, sometimes there are, uh, traffic concerns that are brought up that may not necessarily be related to some permitting that's about to happen. Is there, is there a, maybe a, a mechanism or something we could put in place that at least says when these, when something is raised, you know, if it's in the planning board, maybe Evan records it and it gets sent to the traffic committee just to make sure it's not dropped? Or, or like even the inputs that we got today, I'm assuming that those will at least be noted, and the traffic committee would look at whether there's some action or not to be taken with each of them? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can get it, a, a message out to the staff as well as to the boards, you know, asking...
Like, I remember at one of the planning board hearings, somebody was complaining about current ongoing, like nighttime, traffic on Princeton, and I had forwarded that along. But it seems like these things occasionally come up, and I don't, and, and then, and then I hear at the planning board, they say, "Well, the Select Board's looking at traffic, but that doesn't make it into our meeting." So maybe we just need to look at, how do we at least track, track them to closure, or say they're not something that can be addressed, or, you know, the facts were wrong and we can't address it, or, or whatever, but...
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you again for all your efforts with this.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, our first discussion item is the outreach to the water districts regarding fire hydrants. Last week, Ma Carata, Pat Wojes, and I attended the, uh, Chelmsford Water District meeting, and we had an hour discussion, and I guess I'll, I'm at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Pat, since she's the liaison, and ask her insights, and then I guess I'll provide some supplement here if, if necessary, but I think it's, in courtesy to Pat's role as liaison, I'm going to turn it over to her.
All right, well, thank you. Yeah, I mean, um, everybody was aware of what the issue was. Lori, I don't remember her last name, she was also...
Pellegrino.
Pellegrino, she was also there, so there was a, you know, a robust discussion. Uh, Chief Ryan was also there. I think what it comes down to, to is that, um, everybody's committed to working together to come up with, to make sure this doesn't happen. I mean, there can never be any guarantees, but, um, yeah, I thought that email was in here, and, and they, they do, uh, you know, to follow up on one of the comments that was made earlier, they do test the hydrants on a regular basis, typically yearly. They don't flush them yearly, but they do test them to make sure that they work, that they do flow as they're expected to every, you know, every year they do that, and they have a process, a program by which they are replacing hydrants. Two of those that were impacted in the situation that we, we talked about, um, either have been replaced or will be very shortly replaced. There was some, uh, uncertainty as to what caused the issue. Well, the one that was leaking, um, that one probably would have worked okay, but since it was leaking, it, it was time to replace that one. The one that they, that they said was not working, they're not sure if that was an intermittent problem or what the issue was there, so they're replacing that one, and then the third one was okay. And, but they have, they do have a schedule in place for replacing, um, hydrants around the district. And like I said, they, they're working continuously with the, the Water District and the Fire Department to be sure that the, um, the hydrants do work when they're supposed to. The Water District is always on call when there is a fire. If, if need be, they will go to the location to help, um, you know, work the, uh, the hydrants. Perhaps that should have been done that night, and probably the situation would have been resolved more quickly, but, um, it, you know, it's one of those, you know, Murphy's Law thing, if something could go wrong that night, obviously it did, but they are, uh, working to resolve it. And I don't know, is Chief Ryan on the...
No.
Call, okay. And I don't know if the commissioner from the Water District wants to make any comments, or if he's allowed to make any comments.
John Harrington, uh, Commissioner for the Center Water District. It's one thing Pat did not mention, that we're going to have some type of a education for the, the firemen to get them, they are familiar how to do it, but a little refresher course of opening the hydrants and so forth, we, we think would be very, uh, a positive move, so we're going to be moving on that, coordinate that with the Chief Ryan. That's another thing that, that come out of the meeting. The two hydrants that were replaced, we just moved those up from a list of hydrants. We're always going through the hydrants, they're very, very expensive, and we get a lot of years out of some of these hydrants. However, in time, they need to be replaced. So that's what we've been doing, and the two that we just replaced, as I said, we moved those up in front of the list.
Thank you.
Are the older ones any different than the, are the new ones any different than the older ones, John?
Yeah, well, basically, they're upgraded, uh, they work basically the same, George.
That's what I'm asking.
I mean...
I thought, I thought you always used to flush it almost every year, you used to...
We do a lot of flushing, definitely. You have to get the manganese and rust out of them, they build up, so, so we do do that.
Yeah, I, I think the, the comment was made that that's typically done, like, in, in business areas, in commercial areas, more than residential areas, because the water is continuously used in the residential area, so there's not as much need for flushing. That's the way I understood it.
Just to give an order of magnitude, they have fifteen hundred hydrants, and, you know, so just to give you a sense, and, and what we extended is, they currently don't have their hydrants on like a GIS or type of system, so I've offered that since the town has a GIS system, that we could perhaps partner with them to put a layer on the hydrant, so that way all the hydrants would be mapped and so forth, and, and Chief Ryan actually found that might be helpful, because then if there's a fire scene or the fire department shows up, you have it right on, you know, you can pull it right up in terms of where the hydrants are located and, and, you know...
They used to be marked on a pole, are they still marked on a poles? Like, if there's a hydrant here, it used to be on a, on a telephone pole, and they're closest to it, like, it'd be like a circle or whatever, I don't...
In the distance from the hydrants?
Uh, not the distance, I mean, just that there was one there, at least they used to do that in North, I don't know about the Center, I mean, I know you're more sophisticated in the Center.
Well, we are, you're correct.
Yeah, but, uh, but they used to be, that, I remember that, you know, near, I don't know how long ago, but I haven't noticed it lately, because I don't go looking for fire hydrants, you know what I mean?
But we do have, uh, you know, the pole that's attached to the hydrant...
Right.
During the snowstorms, definitely you're going to see that. And as you're well aware, we shovel out or, or use a backhoe to clean out the hydrants as much as we can, and we always look for the residents, if they can, to help us out in that area of cleaning out, cleaning up the hydrants from a snowstorm.
Be good for the dispatchers to have a list of where the hydrants are too, in case, you know what I mean, some, if they can't find one quick, you know, you only get, it's tagged, you know, so many feet from wherever.
True.
Paul, do you have a, should, should the same conversation or a similar conversation happen with the town and the other two water districts, just to sort of calibrate where we are and...
Yeah, I mean...
Extend the same offer with the GIS mapping?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we can reach out. I expect that next meeting will, which is in three weeks, on the twelfth, we'll probably have the sampling reports from, um, PFAS and everything up on Richardson Road, so we can probably invite North to come, since they, if they're here, we can also invite them to have a discussion on hydrants as well.
Well, do you, uh, my question was, do you want to have an offline discussion with them at their meetings first, or...
Sure, okay, I can have an, I can reach out to Bruce, uh, up at North.
Whatever their preference is.
East is a little more challenging, but I'll try to do that. Okay, okay, I'll reach, I'll reach out to them.
Do you have any thoughts, anybody else?
I think it's going to be important, because, John, do they use the same fire hydrants in the other two, the same brands?
I basically, I think they do. There's three or four different brands that we use and other departments use, so, uh, the list I, we sent out, I think to you, Paul, so there's both three different brands of hydrants that we use over the years.
My understanding was...
They all work the same.
But there's, but the ones in North turn the other way.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah, and that, unfortunately...
When you talk about the training, I think we need to do that, because it's North, and I don't know how the Fire Department knows whether they're in North or Center.
Well, there's a, there is an arrow on the top of the hydrant, it shows, but, you know, when there's a fire going on, and...
Nighttime with a fire.
In the past, there has been a problem in, in North, a fellow yanked it the wrong way. Now, he was from another community helping out, but he broke the hydrant, so he didn't know that Chelmsford, especially this side of Chelmsford, why the hydrant, why we have a cha, a different way, that goes back way before I've been around.
Wow.
And to convert us over to the other districts just would be like building a new filtration plant, it'd be very, very costly.
Thank you.
So are you, so is Center different than most other towns, or is North different than most other towns?
I think, uh, I'm trying to think if Lowell is like us or not. There's another community similar to us. For some reason, back when, they followed some other community that I think, where you turn it, and unfortunately, we're one of the unique ones that go that, the turn differently than the other communities. So, our fire department's going to have to, or does learn, to follow that arrow if they don't know, and turn on the hydrant in our district correctly. Anything else?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
And then the next discussion item pertains to the MBTA Communities' multi-family zoning requirements. Since the board's last meeting on August tenth, the executive, Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing Community Development issued the final guidelines for compliance with the state statute, which is the multi-family zoning districts under chap, section three A of the Zoning Act. Basically, in, in summary, the, the difference from the draft regulations that Evan came in and spoke about versus the final regulations for Chelmsford are minimal. Basically, there, there, there really wasn't any adaptation to the town of Chelmsford because of our size, and, you know, they sort of tweaked some, some, some efforts. What's important right now is, is that the, moving forward, if a community seeks to comply with the requirements, then you, we have to submit an action plan by January, and then if you wish to be in compliance permanently, then you have to have a submittal accepted by the end of calendar year 2024. In our case, because we're a adjoining community, we're not a direct community, and, and the guidelines go through all that, and the statute, and it's all on the, uh, state's website, if people want to go out and look at all the details. So the question is, where do we go from here? Because there's some ambiguity. Right now, if you do not comply with these guidelines, you're ineligible for certain areas of state funding, Mass Works, you know, uh, funding, and the question that's up in the air and was discussed at the MMA seminar last week is, will those exclusions or funding restrictions be expanded in the future? And that's, that's uncertain at this point, because it depends how one reads the statute. And also, there's this notion out there that, that this really isn't optional, it's the law of the Commonwealth. So you're hearing a lot of it, but I guess, I, I think the question is, is how do we go forward as a town of Chelmsford? And in discussing this with Community Development Director Evan Bolansky, the suggestion that we have would be, especially recognizing the pending deadline in, um, January to submit an action plan, is perhaps the, a joint meeting of the Select Board and Planning Board should reconvene, but our thought would be is, we could perhaps ask Jennifer Ray, who's the new executive director of the Northern Middlesex Council of Government, perhaps she could come in, give an overview presentation, sort of moderate a discussion to, again, increase the awareness and understanding of it, and also discuss about how we could move forward. And, um, the thought would be is, we probably need to do this sooner than, than later, and Evan reached out to Jenn, Jenny, and she would be available on September nineteenth, which is, um, the Monday in September that's not a Select Board meeting, because you've got the, the fifth is the holiday, the twelfth is your next regularly scheduled meeting, and then your following me after that would be the twenty-sixth. So the thought would be perhaps the nineteenth, um, maybe a time to get the Planning Board, you know, Select Board, uh, and have this discussion in terms of how and, and, and to best approach this new statute that's in effect. And, um, and go from there. So that was sort of our thought in terms of, you know, how do we move forward on this? It sort of, kind of dovetails into one of your goals, which is about growth strategy and so forth, in terms of how do we deal with this MBTA zoning requirement as part of the community going forward. So that's sort of a, an overview of, you know, rather, you know, like you said, there's pages upon pages of presentation, but again, it really did not deviate from what was presented back in the initial discussion.
And there is a webinar on September eighth...
Yes.
At, at one o'clock, that you would hope would be somewhat beneficial, but...
Yeah.
I don't know how much more detail they'll get into there.
So is your recommendation to have a joint meeting?
Yeah, I think that's the best thing to do, in terms of, let's, you know, the, because obviously this involves zoning, and then the whole issue of the, the, you know, compliance and, we're now no longer debating or questioning, you know, what, what are the rules? It appears now that the regulations are final, and I think it'd be helpful for the town to have a discussion in terms of how do we move forward under these regulations? And, and see, you know, what's, what's the best, best path forward? I mean, I certainly think an action plan could be attainable by the end of January, and that probably would be, be the outline of that discussion, but I think we, you know, need to discuss, you know, what does this mean for Chelmsford? And, and we know every other community, pretty much in the eastern Massachusetts, has that same challenges. You know, on the website is the list of, of communities, and they have a map of it and so, so forth, and, you know, we're, we're clearly a, an adjoining community.
Does the, does the action plan have to be signed off by this board or by the Planning Board, or by whom?
I believe it's by, I believe it's by the Select Board for, for the, um, action plan.
Personally, I think a joint meeting is a good idea. When we had our last joint meeting, it included the Planning Board and the Finance Committee, and everybody at that meeting said, "Yeah, this is kind of the Planning Board's lead from a, kind of the pragmatics that it's related to zoning." So... So I know they're having a work session on zoning this Wednesday. I, rather than us saying you have to come to this meeting, I would really like Evan to ask if they would like to have the meeting, since we kind of gave the lead to them. And then I think as a courtesy, if we're going to have a meeting on the 19th, maybe invite the Finance Committee again, since they were at the last one. It's not mandatory, but they're welcome to join us. What's not, I, I, what's still not clear in my head is, at some point, I think it would be really useful to lay out, here's, for the community of Chelmsford, here are the requirements. Here's what, here's what we are today and what we would have to do in order to meet the requirement. And then also for the community of Chelmsford, this is the funding that we would have access to. And there was a question before, give examples of like how much we brought in. Well, maybe we can just tally that and show, I think it was the Finance Committee that asked, what have we actually brought in under this? Because if you're, if we're not compliant, Paul, the only penalty is that you don't have access to these funding sources?
Like I said, that's up to debate. Some say, some say that that's all it is, and therefore some communities may just opt out. There's another, there are other opinions saying, no, this isn't an optional, that all, this is a law, and therefore communities have to comply with it. And, you know, perhaps we can, that hasn't been determined, but like you said, when something's new like this, there's a, you know, sort of a fog of war in terms of what is it that's, that's being required here?
So my only other thought then with that question of, is this optional? Or is it the law and there's no option? If it's optional, should we also, because this is a big deal, I think, for Chelmsford, okay? And if it's optional, should we also consider whether we have some type of special town meeting between now and when it would be due in January to see if town meeting supports it?
No, I agree, yeah, and that's why I hope.
I don't, I don't think there's time to put it on the warrant for October.
No, there isn't. And this would take a whole night in and of itself anyway.
Right.
And I'm hoping on September 8th, as Pat mentioned on that webinar, that perhaps some of these issues will be clarified, but.
Because it's a law, it doesn't have to, and it's not optional, and it doesn't really have to go to town meeting.
Well, no, you have to change your zoning, you know, you, you know, I mean, you, yeah, you have to change your zoning.
The approach could go to town.
Yeah, approach could go to town meeting.
If you refuse some of this stuff, when are they going to cut some of the aid, cut your aid or something, Paul?
What's that? Yeah, yeah, well, you would not be eligible for certain areas of state funding, including Mass Works and so forth. But like I said, there, there's still some unanswered questions, and I'm sure there probably will be even after the September 8th webinar, but there's, but there's, the other, the other question becomes, what does it mean in a community such as ours where there's, you don't have the necessary infrastructure? But, but what, what the law was clear on is you, all you have to create the zoning. It does, remember, they always said you don't have to build anything. So our case may be, you know, that's fine, here's our zoning, but, you know, but kind of what was discussed in an earlier comment this evening, to build that at that site, you'd need such infrastructure to get yourselves, to, to make it possible, it may not be financially viable. And now those are the vagaries of, and then remembering that when they were doing the 255 Princeton Street, it became a question, sort of your question is, oh, would that qualify under the 50-acre requirement? So those, those are the things that we need to flush, to flush out, so. Yeah, I, I think, like I said, it, it hopefully become clearer. I'll, I'll communicate with Evan about the, the idea of a joint meeting and invite the Finance Committee and, as well as be prepared for a discussion about, you know, where, where, do we stand? And then what does this mean?
And assuming the Planning Board wants to have the joint meeting, could we look at where we have it? Depending on how many boards or committees are going to be there and how many people? I think when we're having a joint meeting, it just feels awkward to have some of the joint meeting participants jumping up and down to the podium. So if we're somewhere where we can all just be sitting and having the discussion, that, I think that would be better, in my opinion.
We could, I could try the senior center and see if that, you know, that usually, that's a little better.
Yeah, or even just a room where we can sit around or.
The admin building, how many does that seat?
If it's just the Planning Board, we could probably fit them all in here, but if it's the Finance Committee too, I don't know.
Right.
We've also used the School Committee Room. I'm not sure how many seats are there. Or even the room next door, there's room, there's room there to make tables.
Even that back one.
That one's too small, I think, yeah. But there's, the cameras and stuff are set up in the room next door where we could potentially.
I can check the school admin. I mean, we've had, you know, we've had tri-boying meetings at the school admin that have been successful, and there's still space or an audience.
Okay. That would be my only other thought. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on that one? So next up, we have the FY 2023 goals. I went through the document and I think I captured, I tried to capture what we said in terms of how we want to measure it and by when. So I'm not going to read it all to you, but my thought was, I'll just kind of go page by page if you have any comments or changes. Bring them up.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Yep.
The dot versus what looks like the dog print or whatever you want to call it, do they mean different things?
Well, so for example, under sewer infrastructure, there was a 1A, which was sewer planning, and a 1B, which was the sewer near-term approach. So just, just so that it was clear which measurements went with which A or B, I just use the same bullet scheme.
Okay, so it's just to, to line them up?
Yeah, it's just a visual.
I was just trying to find.
Yep.
Okay.
So sewer planning and sewer near-term approach, any changes or edits to that? If not, I'll go on to road and sidewalk infrastructure. Any changes or edits to number 2A and 2B? Is this pace okay, or do you want me to slow down? I'm assuming you all read it?
No, I read it. I just want to make sure. My only question on these were, I think you did a great job writing out the goals and everything. I just want Paul to make sure he's okay with the timelines.
Yep.
Just think of what we talked about, please. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. You okay so far?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So next, we had the truck traffic. And there were a few things we wanted to look at specifically, but this is still with the ongoing in the monthly reporting. Everybody okay with that one? Okay. So next up, we had the ARPA funding. So one was the project reporting. Paul, you, we said we would do this monthly reporting, and you had said 95% of the procurements by June. Placed, does that?
Yeah, we'll have it out.
Okay. And then the remaining funding allocation was basically to just make sure we don't forget about it and start scheduling some discussions at the end of this fiscal year. Okay, budgets. I think I captured what Paul had suggested there. You okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody? Okay, I'll go to tax strategies. The first was the tax classification. Having our regular discussions leading up to the hearings, and the second was the approaches for senior citizen property tax relief. Still good with that? Okay, legislative leverage. So there was the budget cycle and processes, and then the relationships themselves from a one-on-one and a group standpoint. And I probably should put over, we wanted to do a discussion this fall before the November elect, or somewhere around, just, just have a focused discussion on what does this mean? And what are we going to do? So we'll, I'll work with Paul to schedule that. Everybody okay? And then Paul, the CCA was the quarterly reporting, beginning in September. Okay. Next up, we had the civic engagement. The first was the collaboration, and we said after the start of the new calendar year, we would schedule a discussion to talk about historical approaches and what we might want to do in terms of improvement going forward. The second was for the Economic Development Commission. Paul was going to extend an invitation in September and then give them some time to let us know when they would be ready to come talk to us. And then the youth and young adults, we talked about scheduling sometime after the start of the calendar year, and I put a couple of considerations there. Since I submitted the packet, well, and also before, I did, I took an action at the last meeting to talk to the School Committee. So I spoke with Donna Newcombe, the Chair of the School Committee, and then after that, I spoke to Dr. Lang. And they were both very supportive of engaging with the high school civics group. Dr. Lang also suggested that the middle school, eighth graders, now do a civics project in the spring. So that might be something that we want to look at integrating. And he, he gave me the name of the faculty person that runs this for the town. And then the other comment that came up and just something to think about was, in addition to the youth, which is a little more transient because they're going off to school and things like that, how do we engage discussion with the young adults and young, young families in town? So I don't know if that would be a listening session or something else, but that's, I just wanted to capture that so we don't forget about it. You okay with that? Okay. Process improvement, Paul, this was all on, all on you for quarterly reporting. You said that you wanted to start in December on status. Are you still okay with that? Yeah?
Yes.
And then parks and recreation, are you, you still okay with that, Paul?
We'll pull something together.
Okay. Next up was the strategic planning. So for the town strategic plan, we said we're going to talk about this, but after the start of the new calendar year, because there's so much else we're trying to do between now and December. And then the growth strategy, this was another one where we said we weren't going to solve it in this document, so we would schedule something in September, October, to have a dedicated board discussion on that topic on one of our agendas. Are we okay with that? All right. And then the next is just the tracking goals that are still important, but they're more of tracking. So it was the Warren Poll and the Fire Station Committee as needed. Richardson Road minimum quarterly, coincident with the sampling cycles. And then the Town Common recommendations in December, and then reviews as needed after that.
This is where I have a question. On 13B, the fire stations?
Yep.
It says town manager to provide updates. I think it's a bit awkward that I would provide an update on a chair, committee that's chaired by the Chair of the Select Board. So I, I would think it'd be better than.
Sure.
That's a maniac, Paul.
I can share that with you, Paul.
Okay, because, yeah.
And then I'll add the.
Okay.
She was just making sure you're paying attention.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And then I'll add the one where we were going to meet in the fall. Which one was that? I have to make a note. The legislative leverage, to just have a meeting sometime in the fall. All right, so I'll make those changes and send them out and have Christina post it to the website as the goals. Are we okay with that? We don't need to vote on these, do we? Will you even say something, Pat?
No.
Okay.
George, you good?
Okay. Okay, Paul.
All right. Two bid awards this evening for proposals that went out. They both pertain to Public Works. The first one is for spot milling and paving. The bids were open on August 15th. The recommendation is to, if, if there were three bids submitted, ranging in price from $277,000 to $324,400. The recommendation is to go with the lowest qualified bidder, which is Newport Construction, in the amount of $277,000. We obviously have experience working with them on other projects. And then the other bid award is for the community education restroom renovation. In that case, there were, again, three bidders. The prices range from $548,850 to $785,100. And again, here, the recommendation is to go with the lowest qualified bidder, which is the low bidder of any L corporation to perform this work. So again, I'd seek the board's confirmation of these two bid awards.
So one on the community education one, alternate one, will that be included?
No, no, no alternate ones. We're, we're struggling with the budget as it is.
Those are expensive all one compared to the other two.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what you're, yeah, and that's what you're seeing. You're seeing quite a spread. You're seeing limited bids, but you're seeing spread in bids in both of those, so. And that's fairly common.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll take a couple of motions.
You care which order?
No.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we grant the bid for the community ed restroom renovations to Nell Corporation in the amount of $548,850.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
And then I will make a motion to grant the bid for the spot milling and paving and award it to Newport Construction in the amount of $277,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 4-0.
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, we're up to.
Yeah, I've got a number of items to touch upon in my report this evening. The first one is sewer bank options and the draft sewer bank policy. Because we've had a discussion at the last meeting, probably have a discussion at the next meeting. But since the last meeting, I, I did reconvene again with DPW Director Christine Clancy and Town Council Paul Haverdy. And, you know, I, I assembled and we reviewed this, you know, roughly four-page document to sort of, you know, put it onto paper in terms of the thinking, and hopefully gives you some insight, and hopefully it raises some issues and questions. We've also shared it with Evan Bolansky, you know, and then, again, trying to, you know, get this sort of short-term approach to what can be done. As, as we noted, it's sort of an overview, we, we haven't come across a community in Massachusetts that has this ability to transfer sewer capacity. We do know of examples of sewer moratoriums where there have been consent orders that allow for inflow and infiltration capacity, you know, generation to allow for sewer connection. So again, the way the document lays out, the first section just sort of documents the fact of Chelmsford sewer capacity and that we have an intermunicipal agreement with the city of Lowell for the flow of 3.01 million gallons. And obviously, we've assigned 0.35 million gallons to Tingsborough, which leaves us with a balance of 2.6 million gallons per day. And that we're basically, we're at our flow limit. And then if we exceed that, then we're liable for any and all damages, penalties, and fines incurred by the city or the Lowell Regional Waste Water Utility, or claims brought against Lowell or the utility as a result of the exceedance of limitation. The second section just, again, provides as reference our recent wastewater flow, which is, for the past four fiscal years, has been between 2.54 million gallons a day and to 2.87 million gallons per day. And obviously, these flows are influenced by weather and economic conditions. And again, that we're at or near our capacity. Section 1.2 is the fact that we, we have a moratorium on sewer connections because we're at our capacity.
It's only been in place one year.
This is our second year. This is the end of our second year. It remains in effect through October 31st, 2022.
It says effective on November 1, 2022.
That's the current language in the 20, that's the current language in our moratorium when it was updated. But, yeah, but it's our second year. So, and, and we know we're, we're going towards a, you know, policy that, you know, in terms of off of moratorium, sort of sewer policy.
Should that say 2020?
I can say, I can correct that to 2020 if it's more accurate. Okay. Okay, 2020, okay. So, and the third part is there are exemptions, you know, every policy has to have exceptions. And this, this. And this, this comes from our moratorium language that there's an exemption if there's, the Board Health declares a imminent hazard to public health, safety, or the environment. And there are allowances for sewer connections as would be allowed for as defined below in this policy in paragraph three, which is the next section, which is paragraph three sewer bank. And it allows a property owner to increase the allocated flow into the system by either a sufficient amount of extraneous infiltration inflow that's been removed from the town sewer system or B, a deeded conveyance of allocated sewer flow from one or more properties to another property. So then three, one goes to the inflow and infiltration. And it's a one-to-two credit that if, if somebody removes two gallons of inflow and infiltration, they would, they would be provided with the credit or benefit of one gallon of flow. And then in practice, you would have to document the actual amount that was in the system. You then describe the work that was performed to remove it. And then there's this post-measurement or certification of that's removed. So that's sort of how that would work once, you know, we identify, you know, inflow and infiltration that, that can be achieved. The second one is the deeded conveyance of allocated sewer flow. And then this language here talks about how you could transfer capacity between units. And then this language in the description comes from the moratorium that we have a sewer unit defined as 200 gallons per day and that for residential developed properties, a single family is one sewer unit, two families is two, and like similarly, three families is three units and four is four units. And then, and then if for multiple families beyond four units, then we have the, from one, again, one sewer unit per each apartment with more than one bedroom. And rental properties with one bedroom or studio apartment would be half a sewer unit. And condominium complexes assessed at one sewer unit for each dwelling unit. And then for non-residential developed properties, the methodology, which is the same under the moratorium, you have the average of the past 10 years of water use while the building is occupied. And if it's less than 10 years, you go to Title V as a resource as well. And it's the lesser of those two amounts for that calculation. So if there's 10 years, it's the 10 years actual. If it's a partial of 10 years or there's issues such as property was shut down because it was vacant or so forth, or the pandemic, then you, you go back to your Title V model for, for assistance. And then for undeveloped residential properties, again, you, you go to the conversion upon the applicable assessments that's within the dwelling unit. And then similarly, if you have a dual-use property, you basically treat it as such if they're not separately metered for their flow. But the important part is that the underlying language in that section that a property owner seeking to convey sewer units must record a permanent restriction on the deed to the property. The property owner shall cut and cap the sewer connection at the town's right-of-way at the property owner's expense. So therefore, it, it does occur that there is, you know, not only is a deed restriction, but there's a physical connection at the roadway, disconnection at the roadway. They'd also have to provide evidence of septic, septic plan approval to the, by the Board of Health for the property where it's removed from. And then the, the deed restriction would include language that permanently eliminates or reduces the right to convey sewer flow from the property into the town's sewer system. So that's sort of how the language would go. And then to, you, go ahead, yes.
Before you go to floor, can we?
Yep, please, yeah, please stop, yeah.
So I just had a couple of questions on the section three sections. Section C, which is residential undeveloped properties, and section D, which is non-residential undeveloped properties, should those, should those state undeveloped properties or redeveloped properties? Because we don't, nowhere in here does it, do we account for redevelopment?
Well, that would be non, redevelopment falls under developed properties, non-residential developed properties. So in other words, if somebody wanted to, you know, develop their properties, then what we would go off of would be their actual flow. So for example, right now, there's a property in one, on 129 that's looking to change from office to warehouse. You wouldn't go to Title V. You'd go to the actual flow of that building for the determination of where their start would be. And then if they wished to deed restrict it, then that would be the basis. So we don't.
So even if they're, even if it's an existing property and they're redeveloping it for maybe even a different use than what it exists, it falls under developed properties?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, please, we want questions, we want clarity.
I have the same question on the dual-use property section. What if it's undeveloped or redeveloped? Because it seems to be that it's existing dual-use properties.
My question was regarding like a church, Paul. And I think you probably.
Yep.
You know, what kind of capacity do you give a church?
Would be their actual capacity. So in other words, if they, if they had 10, most churches have been in existence for 10 years.
Oh, this is one that's gonna be, you know, it was in the same category as what she's talking, you're talking about. It's land and they want, somebody want to buy the land.
Yep.
As a, for, to put a church on it.
Oh, then there's Title V regulations for churches, you know, because churches have very low flow because.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that, that still remains in effect. That's, that's not changing under this policy. The, so if somebody came in and said, I wanted to change a property and build the church on it, they would, they would look to the Title V regulations in terms of whether that was allowable. Usually, but in that case, it's usually a decrease in usage, so it shouldn't be a problem.
You know, probably I was approached this weekend by somebody who would, you know, I mean.
I don't know, I don't.
All right, well, we've had trouble with that. We've, we've had a lot of dealings with this particular person, the owner on the market.
Yeah. Okay, now I know what you're referring to.
Okay.
Yeah.
So now that somebody was gonna buy it for church and they get turned down because, because of short capacity. That's what they said they weren't gonna buy because there's no sewer capacity.
Oh, if there's no sewer capacity, we can't create sewer capacity, unless they could buy sewer capacity.
He says, he says he has two.
Connections?
Two himself, yeah.
If they have, if they have the right to two connections, then they have the right to two connections. That would be their capacity, you know.
And then the capacity has to be calculated off of what the Title V for church. And if they match, good, but if it's not enough.
Then they, then they, right, exactly.
Well, I mean, I know church has a lot of exemptions concerning and things like that. And I didn't know, and I wouldn't know.
That still just comes down to a calculation.
Comes down to a calculation, yeah.
I mean, another great example is, you know, if someone were to buy this building that's right here in the center, the four family, right across from Fishbowl, it's the White House.
Yep.
Right, if they were to decide to turn that into commercial, they'd, they'd get a credit of 200 for four units, which is 800. And if they put in one commercial unit and kept one apartment, then they'd have to use 250 for the commercial unit and 200. So there'd be a net flow there. But so you, it comes, it all comes down to calculations, what the new use is gonna be.
The challenge though is you have to deed restrict it. And that, that.
And potentially metering.
And meter, yeah, we have the right to also install outflow meters as well. So that, that becomes a challenge. And speaking with council and Christine, that, that, that could be a significant constraint is you're basically putting a restriction on a property which may have effect on its value.
So, so for section E, dual-use, should that delineate developed dual-use and undeveloped dual-use? Just like we do for residential and non-residential?
Because it references, it references the earlier sections, A and B.
A and B are both for developed.
Developed, I guess.
There's nothing that addresses undeveloped dual-use if somebody's gonna create a new dual-use property.
They were creating a new dual-use property, then they would have to submit their Title V calculations for what that would be. And then it, it would be what was allocated to that property in its undeveloped state.
That's fine. My question is, should there be a paragraph for dual-use undeveloped properties? Just like, is this, this paragraph?
Okay.
I don't know the answer, but.
All right, I'll check.
This only references the developed properties sections. Or maybe the, the references just need to be fixed.
All right, I'll check, I'll check with Paul Haverty. I'm, I'm not a lawyer.
And then that, the whole four things that are underlined?
Yep.
They're kind of buried under paragraph E. It seems like they're applicable to the whole 3.2 section. So just from a authorship standpoint, I might consider moving them in either upfront under 3.2 or into their own section, but not as part of dual-use properties.
Okay.
The last statement on those underlines, it says, shall include language that permanently eliminates or reduces the right to convey sewer flow from the property into the town sewer system. So is there, is there any future state where our capacity issues are solved and the town would want the owner to have the ability to reconnect to the sewer? Because this says you can never reconnect.
Well, the town would hold the restriction. I guess the town at that time could make that decision. But I, we can't make that decision in, in a vacuum. I don't think you.
The town holds the deed restriction?
Yeah.
Okay.
If, if, if the, the town doesn't hold, the deed restriction's on the private property. The question becomes, can the town? Yeah, the town would, yeah, because it, it's, yes, because it would, the town would have the right because we're the ones who are providing the sewer capacity. So the town, I believe, I can check with council, but I believe the town could have that right to waive that at a future date. But I think that would have to be made at a future time. I don't, you know.
Well, the only reason I ask is in, you know, in the 1990s or whatever, we were all told to connect to the sewer.
Yeah.
And this makes it sound like you can't be told to connect back to the sewer again if the situation changes. I just don't understand how a deed restriction works.
I'm wondering almost the opposite, that somebody would want to be able to connect, yeah.
And could, could they then not because of the way this is phrased?
Okay, I will, I will check with town council.
You want to keep going with section four?
Sure. Section four is how do you use the credits in the sewer bank for increases in the allocated flow? Again, you'd have to provide documentation that you've accumulated sufficient sewer flow credits prior to the connection to the sewer system or the increase in the flow into the sewer system. And then the other part, and this was key, is prior to the approval of that, the DPW would have to determine that the allocation of sewer bank credits would not have any impact on the downstream portion of the town sewer system due to any adequate sewer pipeline, pump station, or other capacity. So that's sort of the logistics capacity that if, if you're in an area, you know, that can't handle the additional flow, then you're not permitted to use, you know, put flow into that area. Kind of the concern we have right now on Littleton Road. And then the final paragraph is that limiting the use of these credits for commercial purposes only and only in the following areas of the town, which would be Central Square, Vinyl Square, Drum Hill, and the Route 129 Business Corridor. And we probably have some kind of a map or delineation that depicts what exactly is Central Square, Vinyl Square, Drum Hill, and the 129 corridor, similar to how we have in the zoning. So basically, what this is for is that, I believe the intent of this was for economic development. And so, and in this case, it's limiting the economic development to those areas and for commercial purposes. So that's my understanding of why we're going through this was to allow for the economic development needs of the community. So therefore, you know, this isn't meant for residential development or an area outside of the areas that are targeted of concern, i.e. limited land areas such as Vinyl Square, Central Square, Drum Hill, and obviously, the 129 corridor is our commercial corridor.
Will the planning board be revealing this also?
Yeah, in fact, there was, there was even discussion, and I heard this from Evan, that if you have this joint meeting, that perhaps an additional item, in addition to the multifamily zoning is perhaps the two boards should discuss this policy. Because I'm sort of hearing from Evan that, that planning board members have an interest and perhaps some concerns about this sewer bank and the sewer credit system.
We can do that, but if they want to put it on their agenda to review it as a planning board, I think they should move out and do it. I mean, we can, we can also talk about it jointly, but.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll send it to Evan and.
I didn't know if they were doing it at their work session this week, or?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. And then the other thing that had come up in the past, I think Ken had brought it up, is should we have like a public input on this at some point? And we, we have put it off because we wanted to have something drafted first. When, what do you think is the right timing?
What I think, what I think.
Would it be like early October?
Yeah, I think so. Because what I'm, what I'm envisioning happening is coming back at your next meeting in three weeks on September 12th. Town council will be here. We can almost sort of have sort of a final look at this. And then, as you said, schedule some kind of public input and/or a discussion with the planning board. You know, and sort of, I think the goal being is that hopefully this gets, you know, sort of comes together in, in the October timeframe.
So, so just so you know, I, I do not favor this whatsoever. I think, I understand we want to try to be creative and, you know, allow for some increased development and more sewer capacity for these areas that you have mentioned, Paul. But I, I think we're just opening such a can of worms in this town as far as people, you know, shutting off their sewers and wanting to sell a credit to somebody. I, I just do not favor it the way that it's, that it's written. And I don't really see any way that I would favor it because I think we're changing the whole, you know, way that we had set out to have the sewer in town. And I know that we do have, we don't have capacity right now, but we have options to circumvent that. And I just do not favor it.
What options do you see?
You have, you have a private septic or you have, you know, wastewater treatment. And I understand that some of these locations, you don't have enough, you know, land area to do that. But then they can come up with creative options. I just don't think this is the creative option that I would favor to, for how to increase sewer capacity for some of these locations.
I think early on, we were hoping that we'd have inflow and infiltration, which would eliminate this cutoff and so forth. We're just not there yet. And we, you know, we expect to have the report in the fall from Weston and Sampson of their, their initial study that they completed. So, because that sort of would have held promise. And maybe it still does. I mean, from what I'm gathering and the research I've done, we don't need a huge amount of capacity because the town's mostly built out. So we're, and, and I will also let you know this. I was in a call since the last meeting, I think it was last week, that was assembled by Congresswoman Trey Hand's office about the sewer capacity. So Christine was on the call. We had representatives there from Tingsborough, Lowell, you know, Drakett, and Tewksbury on the call about the sewer capacity issue. And it's real. I mean, Drakett is concerned, they expressed their concerns in the meeting that they're coming up against their capacity and they would like some relief or some assistance. Tewksbury's pretty well, they have ample capacity and they're still doing sewer in parts of their town. So they're sort of, you know, monitoring it off to the side. But one of the things that I suggested is an action item for the Congresswoman's office. If they could provide some temporarily, if not permanent relief and explain, what do you mean? We believe that the plant in Lowell, the wastewater plant in Lowell, can operate above its permitted capacity. What's slowing that down is they haven't resolved the consent order with the city of Lowell and the EPA and the DEP on the whole combined sewer overflow of putting raw sewage into the river. What we've asked is, and we hope that that gets resolved for everyone's benefit, the cities and the river and everybody else's, the environment. What we've asked is, is there a way to, again, encourage the relicensing of the plant for additional capacity that could be allocated proportionally to the communities? Or if that can't be done permanently, could you at least give us a 10, 15-year sort of temporary expansion capacity to, to basically not hinder the economic development issues that we're confronting? And so that's being looked at. Again, I don't have an answer, I don't have a commitment, but I want you to know we're sort of looking at all avenues. And that may hold some promise because if we could receive additional permitted capacity, then, then again, that, that sort of, you know, diminishes the, the real impacts that we're experiencing in real time right now. So I just want the board to be aware that we're, we're looking at everything and again, trying to look at the resources. And in fact, even at Middlesex III, we're trying to get a discussion forum this fall about, you know, with the change in administration and stakeholders, with the new administration coming in in January is, how do we address the housing and other community needs coming in in January, is how do we address the housing and other community needs if we don't have basic infrastructure of water and sewer and electricity capacity, you know, to support the economies of, you know, this area as well as, you know, the state as a whole? So-
I mean, the way this is written too, Paul, you know, and I hear what Pat's saying, but it says specifically the, the credits can only be used in Central Square, Vinyl Square, Drum Hill, Route 129 Business Corridor, or as they were targeting. Is there a way then, if you think that might happen, where Lowell might get additional permitting two years down the road or whatever, is there a way to direct that permitting only towards commercial use? Or will that be open to residential, commercial, first come, first served? And can we use this document to direct any additional use that comes up from the state?
I don't know. That's something that we could check with council. And it may, it may even be a condition of that permitting. In other words, for, that, like you said, let's say they allow an extra 500,000 gallons per, whatever the number is, but then say they, the, you know, the additional capacity would be directed towards economic development. But the, the challenge is, is that there's a big push, as you know, in the state for housing development, and that, that might, I'm not saying, it may not be attainable, but we can ask-
No, it'd just be tough, though, if all of a sudden we get new sewer flow, and it's first come, first served, and the first one in is a 450-unit apartment building, and they grab all the sewage on us.
Exactly.
And now we're stuck again.
Right.
So I want to just, I'm just, now I'm wondering, can we be proactive? Even if we don't aggressively implement a credit system, but have a document like this in place, where it addresses that, and we have it in place proactively, so that if we do get additional sewer, we can direct where it goes?
Right. Because right now, we have an allocation across the whole community. Could there be a thing where the, the additional capacity is allocated to these districts, solely these districts for economic development?
Yeah. I mean, I understand what this document does. I'm not sure how much buy-in you're going to get with it, because of like what you just said. But if you could tag in there a paragraph that talks about future use by the, the state or federal government or capacity, that if it goes to those areas first, you know, that we spelled out, then it's become a slightly useful document, even though we don't, maybe a lot of people are going to use the credits.
Okay. And maybe, maybe that's something we can also incorporate into our sewer policy, because as I said, we're also, Christine's working on-
She speaks as proactive in a way.
Working on the transition from the moratorium to a sewer policy, and perhaps that language could be-
That makes more sense, Kenny. I mean, I think they would more have to pass something like that than they would just generally. I mean, because that's going to help our tax base.
If they, if they pass it with the thought it's going to be used for more housing, but we have something in place that specifically directs it to our commercial area in place.
Could you remind me, how much excess capacity do we have?
Depends on, it depends on the, depends on the rainfall. Seriously, it really, I mean, we were, we were, it's a 12-month rolling average. We never technically exceeded it, because Tingsborough's not using the portion that we allocated to them. But if you look at the 2.66 gallons, we exceeded it, you know, ones back three years ago. But remember, we've had drought years, you know, the last two, the rainfall totals have been, have been light the last couple of years. And the same thing, the plant itself exceeded capacity twice in the last five years. So technically, there is no capacity for either the plant or the town of Chelmsford. But it's, you know, the DEP's done nothing about it, which, not that they were doing anything about us, but they've done nothing about the plant exceeding its capacity, which is a bit puzzling. But I think they're so enthralled and focused on this, you know, combined sewer overflow, where it's really trying to address the issues with the raw sewage.
Well, they have to get a permit from the EPA, that's-
Right, exactly. Because, you know, how can they be expanding a plant's capacity when they're still dumping raw sewage or don't have a plan to mitigate that? And that mitigation is, is going to be tremendously costly, as you can imagine.
They only did half of the city, they were supposed to do the whole city about 10 or 15 years ago, right?
Yeah. I mean, if it were easy, it'd have been done by now. I mean, you know, if it weren't costly. And then that raises other issues that may come down the ride, is, for example, could Chelmsford purchase inflow capacity in Lowell, you know, and those, and those, maybe those might be, but again, those are just unknowns at this point in time. So like most things, this is a policy that will probably evolve over time.
And the weather would make it an unknown, too, because if you had a lot of water, a lot of rain and snow and what have you, that would just increase their capacity and-
Right.
So if the, if the planning board can fit in a review between now and the 19th, great. And regardless, you'll put the, you, you're suggesting put this on as a second agenda item on the 19th?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the planning board would probably meet in the 14th of September.
I know they have a really full agenda that night, but I just think it might be more productive if they're able to have a discussion or give feedback before we get together, and if they can't, so be it. Anything else?
Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Hopefully the others won't take as long. The next item is Charles Way. As you know, this Charles Way thing's been going on for over a dozen years. We had a discussion here a year or so ago. We've been, I have a placeholder on the warrant for Charles Way. Christine's been working and even, you know, you can tell by these emails, going back to June, the end of June, July, about what would the cost be with, with the property owner in terms of doing the improvements to get, help get it to be an accepted way. And, and therefore, I've given you the correspondence. The strange part was is, as, since the last meeting, I reached out and saying, you know, in general, saying, look, we're, we're nearing the fall town meeting, and we really need to get moving on this, because one of the whole issues was the eminent domain taking and identifying the parties of beneficial interest. And it was our understanding, when we had discussions several months back, that we were, that we were going to get some information and efforts towards that, it just never transpired. And so here, here we are now, on August 22nd, three weeks away from signing the warrant, and we're running out of time in terms of taking, doing the action about taking the property. Because the way, the way the understanding was, was that if there's an agreement with the prop, with the developer, the town would take the property, the developer would contribute to the improvements, then the improvements would be made, the developer would develop a subdivision, the road would be accepted, and we'd all move on. Well, as you can see by the correspondence, there doesn't seem to be any movement. And, and I had council, you know, deal with the developer's legal counsel, and at this point, you know, in speaking to Paul Haverdy at the end of last week, you know, we're, nothing's moving on us. And so that's where we stand at this point. So I just want to report back to you that, and, and share with you the actual correspondence that we're, that what we're having here is that there's really been no movement, which is a little disappointing, because we thought at the beginning, you know, the end of June, the beginning of the summer, that we'd be partnering together to, you know, identify the stakeholders, move towards, you know, and in order to move towards a town meeting, you, you want to have that development agreement. And I just tell you, as of this point in time, it's not coming together. And again, Attorney Haverdy will be at the next meeting, we can continue this discussion, but I just want to report to you at this point in time.
Paul, if I read that email, though, I mean, isn't Paul Haverdy basically saying you can go ahead and build these houses?
Yeah, you know, yeah.
Yeah. The, I guess you can build, you can get a building permit, but the question is, is do you have a right to, to travel on the roadway? Because in other words, if you were to go and purchase the house or finance that house, someone's going to do a title examination. Otherwise, why are we even engaged with this discussion with, with the property owner? And why have we been engaged in this discussion for the last decade plus? And I think that's the stumbling block, so, yeah, he's got, you know, so I-
It makes it seem like, well, I can just go build these houses anyways.
Yeah. All right, so then what are we doing? What have we been doing? What have we been having discussions for? That's why, and that's where I, I think it's, it's, I don't think it's quite that easy. And having worked with previous council, town council on this, and having suffered through meetings over the last dozen or so years with property owners on Charles Way and so forth, I don't think it's that easy. And if it is that easy, well then, then just tell us we're good. But I don't, you know, again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not pretending to be an attorney, but my understanding is that there were two choices for the property owner, build his own subdivision road?
Wasn't he going to do that?
Yeah. That's his choice, but it's more expensive. And that, and therefore, this is the less expensive route. But you're right, if it's the least expensive, you don't have to do anything, then why isn't he doing that? And that's the case, fine. But I don't know what we were engaging on. But I, I kind of wanted the same thing. Okay, so that's Charles Way. The other thing that's transpired since the last meeting is the opioid settlement distribution. Massachusetts Department of Public Health, you know, following up on the actions from the Attorney General's Office, has put out information on the existing opioid settlements with the manufacturers and distributors. The town of Chelmsford would receive $664,968 in total. And that money would come between now through the year 20, fiscal year 2039. Thus far, the treasurer, Finance Director John Souza informed me, we've received $23,097.89. That came in on August 16th. We are scheduled to receive this fall a total of $139,844. So basically, we're scheduled to receive an extra $100,000 this fall. And then once you get past this initial distribution this fall, when you go out into the subsequent fiscal years, you're getting about, I'll tell you what they are, $24,275 next fiscal year, in fiscal year 25, it's $30,383, in fiscal year 26, it's $30,383, in fiscal year 27, it's $35,047, and all the way out to fiscal 39, where we'd get $30,038. So, long-winded way of saying, we're going to get a lump sum of $140,000 this fall, and then roughly $30,000 or so for the next, you know, 15 years. There are requirements on how the monies have to be allocated. There, since the legislature hasn't adopted a reserve fund, which was part of the Economic Development Bill, which still has not been enacted at the state level, the Department of Revenue is telling towns, you have to treat it as a local receipt, just like any other local receipt, miscellaneous local receipt, which means the money has to be appropriated at a town meeting, and, but you have to expend it on the guidelines of the program, which is basically for opioid treatment and prevention. So with all that, I've placed an article on the warrant for the fall town meeting to appropriate the funds to the Board of Health for opioid treatment and prevention in accordance with the settlement requirements. And so what I would envision happening out is the, whatever amount we're receiving by fall town meeting would be, would be appropriated, and again, it would carry over beyond the fiscal year, and then you have to do an annual reporting to the Department of Public Health. And then if money comes in during the fiscal year, we'll track that, obviously, and then just, you know, square it up in the years ahead. So the good news is, is, you know, there is now some clarity and direction on, from the Attorney General's Office and the Department of Public Health, and how the, the monies that will be received and how they can be expended, and how we have to report it.
With that money, would, would an appropriate use, like, we wound up spending ARPA funds, for example, on mental health professionals and the police and the border. Is that a, is that an applicable use, or?
Yeah, I think it can be for anything that's opioid treatment, mental health treatment, abuse, you know, counseling.
And, and it, so I get allocating it to the Health Department, but let's suppose the Police Department had something come up, could that money, is that-
Yes.
-movable?
Yeah.
If there's, if there's a need in a different department?
Yeah. Or, the question came up even in talking to the Chiefs, you know, could we use it to buy Narcan and the other thing? Yes, the answer is yes, and the Board of Health could approve that. What you can't do is supplant your existing budget, because then you're, you know, so that's what the reporting is.
So can we set up a revolving fund for this? A short-term revolving fund?
Well, that's, that's what the legislature has been asked to do that, to set up what they call a receipts reserved or a revolving fund for it. But again, that's tied, the legislature hasn't acted upon it yet. It was, it was tied into the Economic Development Bill, and now we're waiting to see if the legislature will do something. But as of this point in today, this is the method that we'll proceed with.
So without a revolving fund or something like that, it becomes a use it or lose it each year?
No, it becomes, it goes to the general fund, and therefore, you have to appropriate it as, as you would as part of the budget, but then you have to then expend it for that purpose. So it's kind of a, the fundamental rule of local finances is unless otherwise defined by law, all monies received go to the general fund. So then that's available for appropriation if it's received by town meeting. So we would raise and appropriate it, because that would be the local receipt fund, and then it would, but it has to go to the purpose of that. So in other words, we couldn't use it to buy a police car or something.
No, it's not my question. My question is if there's not a fund set up, like Pat suggested-
It goes to the general fund.
Right. And then it becomes use it or lose it for that purpose for that year.
Right. But then it would, then it would probably come out in the next year as free cash, then we would determine how much of it, the free cash was the, from the funds, and then appropriate it to the next year. And so that's that. The next one was a School Street Railroad Freight House preservation. Long story short, because it's been a long story, basically, the Garrison House is interested in relocating the freight house to its location on Garrison Road. CSX Transportation basically came back with the same answer as seven years ago, saying they're not interested in selling the property, land that it sits on. They're interested in getting rid of the dwelling, but they're not interested in selling the land that it sits upon. So therefore, the choice is, the town's welcome to take it, relocate it, or a private party, in this case, the nonprofit Garrison House Preservation Association, or they're going to, they're going to seek to raise the structure. So I, what I, what I believe is happening is they're, they're, I provided them with the communication to access the property, and therefore, they're going to have somebody come out. And basically, how I understand what happened, if it can be moved, is they basically would take it apart piece by piece, and the only-
But they did it before, and-
Exactly.
Other one of yours.
Yeah. And, because it's been moved before. It was, the freight house was actually on the other side of the street.
They marked each piece and then-
Yeah. Marked each piece and reassemble it, you know, and so the only request that may come, maybe at a future town meeting, but not likely this October, so I'll pull that article, would be perhaps if the community preservation could pay for the cost of, you know, transporting it across the community, you know. But that's where it stands at this point, is the Garrison House is going to evaluate whether it can be relocated, and it, and then I think they'll seem to be interested in proceeding if it can be. So I'll keep you updated, and you may hear about it as well, but that's where it stands at this point, so we'll see. The, I have a revised draft of the 2022 Fall Annual Town Meeting. Three weeks with your next meeting, you're scheduled to sign the warrant. There are a couple changes from the draft I gave you two weeks ago. For example, Article Nine, the appropriation of the statewide opioid settlement funds is new. The Article 16 may be stricken, depending upon the, what discussion is at the Conservation Commission's next meeting about the Article, the transfer of the warrant pool property to the commission. Article 17 may, will likely be dropped, because again, we're, we're told that they will not be likely coming to this town meeting for funding. It just doesn't, I don't think they'll have enough time to pull it together and complete their work. And then Article 19 may be dropped, which is Community Preservation Fund rescind unexpended appropriations. Community Preservation Committee met last week, and they didn't have anything that they identified as unexpended appropriations. And then some new additions. Article 29 is to extinguish a sewer easement at 255 Princeton Street. That's the UMass Lowell West Campus. There's a sewer easement on the document that was granted by the county commissioners over 100 years ago, and Melissa Robbins, the attorney there, is seeking for the town to extinguish it and chaired the documentation with Paul Haverdy, just because it's not necessary, it's not connected to anything, it's not a sewer easement. So I think they're just trying to clean up the deed for the property. So that I don't think is an issue, and shouldn't be an issue. What may be more of an issue is the final article, Street Acceptance for Navnasa Drive. That's the subdivision that right now is not completed, so I don't know if technically the road will be completed in time for town meeting, but there's also something that's alarming about Navnasa Drive is, the end of Navnasa Drive joins Westford.
Is this the one up on Dunstable?
Yes, the one off of Dunstable Road. And where there's a concern that the property in Westford is commercially zoned, and so the concern in this discussion, that my understanding of it is that if, if the town were to accept Navnasa Drive as a public way, then that would provide the frontage for the commercial property in Westford, which could bring us back to another commercial trucker type of issue that we've, we're dealing with on Ledge Road. So again-
There's another quarry right in it, too.
I'm just, so I, I don't know where this, if this will advance the town meeting, but the issue still remains, whether it's now or in the spring or whatever time, the, there is this issue of frontage and access to Westford commercial land regarding this new subdivision roadway of Navnasa Drive, and town council's aware of this, and- roadway of Navnasset Drive, and Town Council's aware of this, and perhaps the planning board would be too, if they're, if they have to recommend on street acceptance and so forth. So again, the developers reached out as seeking street acceptance, but at this point, in speaking to Christine Clancy, it hasn't been completed, so we don't have as-built, we don't have verification of his bill to the subdivision specifications and what was required by the planning board. But then, again, the bigger issue is, even if it is, then you've got a bigger issue is that would the town want to accept it? And that would be, obviously...
So you have this Article Thirty is submitted by the Select Board, which I know street acceptance is typically...
Generally would be, yeah. It won't be when it gets, if it stays on the warrant, I won't put it to the Select Board because you've not endorsed it, and I don't want to give that impression.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, because I, when it came in, I just put it on the list, and then as we were discussing it, we're like, whoa, wait a minute, this, you know, and, you know, credit Christine for bringing the attention, saying, hey, wait a minute, Paul, this is the one that connects to the commercial land in Westford, and like, oh, okay. And, you know, I know Evan's aware of it, and I'm sure the planning board members may be as well, so I just, but no, when it comes to the final form, it will not say Select Board if it remains because you've not endorsed it. So that's the latest revision of the warrant. Treatment of weeds in Freeman Lake. Again, the short story is, the DEP is scheduled to come out on Thursday, August 25th, to do an inspection of the lake. I guess they're making arrangements for a boat, some folks out there, and so obviously, this is not going to get resolved for this bathing season because we're, you know, we're shutting down the lifeguards in two weeks. But what I think we wanted to do was see this through, so that if the issue can be resolved, and that way, next spring, you know, we can go out and treat the both, both the lakes, you know, prior to the start of the lifeguard and swimming season. So that's where it stands at this point. The DEP is scheduled to come out on August 25th, and perhaps sometime this fall, we'll get some determination, and then whether it's a modification or what have you, but that's where it stands at this point. Another thing just to report upon is we're entering the school season. The Facilities Department performed the lead and copper testing in the schools. There were over 110 samples taken, and they only found one bubbler at Community Ed that didn't pass the primary and secondary test for lead and copper, and that's obviously been shut down, repairs will be done. That's good news. You remember a couple years ago, after the Michigan situation, there was a lot of alarming about bubblers and water quality in schools. But the good news is, we, the Facilities Department did their annual testing, and we do not have any issues with lead and copper in the pipes in the schools. And then additional sidewalks on Turnpike Road. Back at the June 2021 town meeting, town meeting authorized the Select Board to take easements for the construction of sidewalks on Turnpike Road. We've not brought that for action, and the reason for that is, is that the environmental permitting through the Conservation Commission, which obviously is overseen by the DEP, has not been completed. They're, we're waiting for National Grid to make a determination as to whether they would allow flood storage mitigation as a result of the sidewalk project, because again, you're altering the land that goes along the edge of the wetlands to be performed under their power lines. If not, then we'll have to go back with an alternative plan. The other constraint on this project is project cost. And this may ultimately perhaps go in the form of a tip project, because it's that significant, the project cost, because you've got to cross the wetland crossing down by the Credit Union, which is sort of the same significant cost barrier that they ran into up off of Hunt and Littleton Road on the sidewalk there, that those are significant, very costly. And then the construction costs are significant. I mean, you're probably, you could be talking a seven-figure project when all said and done, at a minimum, if not more than that. So when talking, in discussing this with Christine Clancy, we're looking, is it possible to put the sidewalk on the other side of the road, or what can we do out there? But first, let's get a determination from National Grid and see what the environmental issues are, and then what the financial issues are, and then make it, come back to you with information, and sort of look towards a direction. It is the missing link of the sidewalks, you know, if you are in that whole corridor of area from Warren Avenue down towards Belrika Road, you know, going either 129 or going into the center. So it's clearly why it's targeted for an area for sidewalks, but the environmental and cost determinations are obviously very compelling. So we'll, they'll be, DPW will be working on that in the months ahead, trying to get a full handle, and hopefully get a determination from National Grid on, you know, what can be done out there environmentally.
Paul, when we, when we put this on the warrant in 2021, did we have an idea back then on how we would fund it, or did we not yet understand how costly it was going to be?
We didn't understand how costly it was going to be, and that really boiled down to the environmental mitigation, but also that culvert crossing, it's almost a bridge, there's no other way to describe it, down by the Credit Union, which, as I mentioned earlier, is the same issue that they've, that's impeded the completion of the sidewalk off of Hunt Road near Littleton. It's just ridiculously expensive to do that work, which in your mind just sounds like an easy thing. Oh, you just put a culvert in, you put the sidewalk over it. It's, so no, we did not have a full appreciation of what this would take in terms of environmentally, as well as, as well as cost-wise.
And when you say, looking at, like, possibly the other side of the road is an option, so that would, you'd wind up putting like a crosswalk or something, and people would cross?
Yeah, probably at like Warren Avenue. If you, then at the end of Warren Avenue, when that was constructed, there's a crosswalk there onto Turnpike Road, and the sidewalk ends. So you basically, you know, obviously, we'd have input discussed with the neighbors, would they be interested? And then what would that cost in terms of running the sidewalk down? Because you'd have to have some takings there. And is there a way to, you know, to do that, you know? But you're still going to have the wetland crossing even when you get to it. So that doesn't, that doesn't go away, and that's a significant cost item, which I don't think was fully appreciated at the time. And then the last thing is on the transportation bond bill. When the lightsight have completed its work at the beginning of August, in the Senate Transportation Bond Bill were the top two items that were submitted on behalf of the town, which was the school street over Stony Brook Bridge repair, which we estimate is about three-quarters of a million dollars to design and construct the recommended repairs. And then the other one was the traffic, Town Center Traffic Signalization Improvements, which is $400,000. Again, these are only authorizations, they're not appropriations, and so as noted in the message from the Senator's Office, we would have to work with our legislative delegation, with the next administration, to see if they would release the funds for these purposes. It's very similar to the $5 million that were in the center, and I think we got millions for Roberts Field at one point that were never released by the governor. So what this does, it puts you in the game, but it doesn't guarantee the results until the...
Until the check comes.
Until the check comes. So, but if you don't have this, you're not a player for it. So that's, you know...
Politicians.
That's, well, it's a question of how much the state wants to borrow in their financial capacity, and so that's my report. I do have two appointments to the Parade Committee. Candace Chase and Sam Chase are seeking to join the Parade Committee. Candace is, she served last year, and she's seeking to continue, and then Sam decided to join his wife as a member of the committee. So I'd seek your confirmation of their appointments for a one-year term expiring June 31st, sorry, July 31st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve the town manager's appointments for Sam Chase and Candy Chase to the Parade Committee.
Aye.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero.
Thank you.
So next up, we have minutes, the August 8th, 2022 minutes. Are there any amendments before I take a motion?
Anything, Pat? I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the August 8th, 2022 Select Board meeting.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. And next up, we have just a clarification. So Christina Bruce and I met with Attorney Haverty, and you have his letter in your packet. The question we posed was one that has been brought up before about if we have minutes that simply document a vote on the releasability or lack of releasability, without any content of the subject minutes, would releasing those minutes that document the vote subject the, subject minutes to release? And basically, what Attorney Haverty is saying is, as long as those minutes that you're releasing have no content, they would not. So unless there's any questions or concerns with that, when I do my next review of all the minutes, I will bring forward all of those minutes documenting votes of minutes for release, for recommended release.
Isn't that opposite what Attorney Fair had told us? Isn't that why we get into...
That's why we had Attorney Haverty dig into this, because Attorney Fair had said he suspected that it would open up. But Paul looked into it, and you're right, that's why we were doing it, and that's why Christina and I asked for clarification. Because otherwise, the other thing we would wind up getting into is approving subsets and redacting others, and this is much cleaner, and it doesn't subject us to...
It's the answer we wanted.
Yes. And it's early, it's 8:21, and I'll take a motion.
We're not going to do liaisons?
Oh, the liaison reports.
That's a long one.
I guess it's going to be a little bit later that we take a motion, sorry about that. George, do you have any?
Well, yeah, I mean, we have good news and bad news in the end, but I mean, it was all good, actually, for the kids that we had in here two weeks ago. The baseball team, they finally, they got all the way to the finals of the United States Championship, eight and under, and they lost today, they could beat 10 to nothing, but they come back with some great victories along the way, and they did us proud, and they did themselves proud, and I'm sure they'll, seventy years from now, they'll be talking about this. I mean, this is a great experience, and the first time anybody from around this area ever really got that far in any of the tournaments, so, you know, I congratulate them, and good luck to the kids, and maybe we'll have them back in here again, and, you know, give them, whatever. But anyways, too bad, but, you know, it was a tough ending, but it was a very, very successful year for, congratulations, and...
It's awesome.
Hopefully, they'll be back next year in a different tournament, you know what I mean?
Ken?
I'm good.
Yeah, I really have just one thing about an Eagle Court of Honor that I attended a couple of weeks ago. We had seven scouts who attained Eagle designation that day, and they are Aiden Buckley, Ganesh Donkey, Samuel Hargit, Colin Lane, Nicholas Blaver, PJ Ralbofsky, and Bryce Stacy. So congratulations to these young men, and good job.
Yeah, great job.
I have a couple from the school committee. The public school system has been engaging with the students and families for the start of school, and they've been reviewing the updated curriculum pacing guides that are based on student performance data, and also the DESI protocols for COVID. Also, just a reminder that a survey to residents was sent out by the Tennis Court Study Group, and they will be meeting tomorrow at the School Administration Building. For the planning board, just a reminder on some of the public hearings. This Wednesday, August 24th, there is a zoning public hearing on the citizens petition that was submitted regarding warehouses, and they will also be doing a zoning work session with Town Council. And on September 14th, they are planning continued public hearings for four properties. One is 255 Princeton Street, the multifamily development at the former UMass West Campus. The second is the 279 Belrika Road Warehouse Facility. The third is the garage at 150 to 153 Dalton Road. And the fourth is, they will be continuing the public hearing on the River Neck Road development. From the Age Friendly Committee, they had a age-friendly job fair yesterday, or I'm sorry, on August 18th, and there were more than 100 people and 19 companies at that. And they had a lot of gratitude expressed by the companies for all the candidates that showed up, and so thank you to the businesses and organizations that supported that, as well as to the people and job seekers who went. And then this coming Thursday, August 25th, Representative Jim Arciero will be presenting a $25,000 check for supporting the senior nutrition program, including the Meals on Wheels, that was one of the legislative earmarks that he helped get. And they, his, Representative Arciero and his staff will also be hosting an ice cream social for the seniors, starting at 11:30 that day. And then I'll just also mention, we've been notified that the Middlesex County 4-H Fair will be held this year from Friday, August 26th through Sunday, August 28th. So if you're interested in that, you can mark your calendars for the coming weekend. Okay, and now it's 8:26, and I will take a motion.
I will make a motion to adjourn the executive session to review executive session minutes from the August 8th, 2022 meeting of the Select Board regarding segments one and two, and not to return.
Aye.
Okay, roll call, George.
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And I vote aye.